Hello, good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday evening 6:00 PM workshop. We have our assessor here, Mr. Healy, Director Healy. If you can, yeah, please kick us off.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of some of the councils, I did a survey of a number of municipalities that offer senior property tax assistance. I'm here tonight just to discuss the findings and possibly outline something that the council or the city could do to help our Lewiston seniors. All of the municipalities I surveyed tie their programs to age, income, and number of years living in a residence. Some also tie it to the property tax fairness credit, which is scheduled as part of your state main income tax return. The assistance I found ranged from $100, low, to a maximum of $1,500, depending on the municipality, and it's depending on the taxpayer income level and the age. As I mentioned, Lewiston could enact a program for senior property owners that are 65 years of age or older, have resided in a home in Lewiston for 10 years, and have a household income under $60,000. Again, this is just based on information that I was able to glean from other municipalities that have these programs. These are some of the guidelines that they use. Again, and then just basing the refund to the taxpayers based on income, $0 to $25,000 would be $600, again, based on my outline. $25,000 to $40,000 would be $500, and $40,000 to $60,000 would be $400. What we don't know is the true cost of the program. We can only estimate based on what we do know, and that was the property tax stabilization program that the state implemented and then rescinded back in 2023. We had 1,657 applicants, of which 1,601 qualified. Based on that, using the higher number, we estimated about $956,000 cost to implement the program. Again, just a framework, just an outline based on other municipalities. Happy to answer any questions, and again, ultimately, this is your decision, so.
So I see here that Director Roy has estimated that this will cost nearly a million dollars to implement. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and that could be on the low end. Again, we don't know how many people didn't apply for the stabilization program.
Oh, it could be much higher than this number.
It could be much higher.
Okay, thank you. Further comments and questions, Councilor Chittum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read somewhere, either in your memo, Director Healy, or elsewhere, that the state could easily share with us the number of applicants to and recipients of its property tax fairness credit.
We are pretty confident that the numbers we have are accurate. We tracked all the applications. Everything was submitted to us for stabilization, so we know we had 1,657 and 1,601 refunds were granted.
Okay, that's the program that was canceled after one year.
Correct.
The property tax fairness credit has been going on for some years.
Oh, right, right.
And my question is specifically, will the state share that information with the municipality, or is it confidential?
That is a very good question that I don't know the answer to. It is a schedule of an income tax return, so I don't know how public that is.
All right. If we can get that, that would be invaluable information to help us firm up the numbers that you put forward in your report. I'd also like to ask, you, I think, very quickly said that other municipalities limit their programs or tailor their programs around age, residency, and income level.
Correct.
Is that, is it age, residency, or income level, or a combination of those?
It's typically all three.
All three?
They want to make sure that their senior residents that need assistance, that have lived in a municipality for a number of years, are getting the assistance.
Do you have any sense as to why there is a residency requirement? In your data, it's 10 years. What do other communities say they have that in place for?
I was in the town of Cumberland when they implemented their program, and they had mentioned that they wanted to help their long-term residents. They, at the time, were 10 years. I'd have to go back and read their guidelines now, but I believe it is still 10 years.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Harriman?
Thank you. Thank you for putting these numbers all together. So I'm not opposed to such a program in concept, but I'm just concerned about where we're, how we're going to pay for it. You know, if we give some residents a property tax break, the other residents are going to have to pay for that, so that close to $1 million is going to raise everybody else's taxes. I do agree with the, definitely with the income test, and I think that the residency requirement is a good idea as well. Like you said, it helps out the people who have lived in town for a while and need that assistance. So my only concern is how much other people's taxes are going to go up to pay for such a program.
Councilor Roy?
Thank you. Again, thank you for putting this all together. This is something that I've been really asking for, for a long time now. One of my thoughts to this is we've got a revaluation coming up, so we're going to get extra money out of that, I'm sure, which might be able to pay for some of this, I'm thinking.
A revaluation does not generate income. It's revenue neutral. What it is, it's a redistribution of the tax burden, so it levels a playing field, so everyone's paying a similar percentage of the overall tax burden, so there is no additional income. That's a common misconception with a revow. In order for there to be any money, you'd have to appropriate it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Further questions for our chief assessor? Councilor Chittum?
We are not debating this tonight. If this chooses, if this option comes forward, then we'll have, I think, a fairly rigorous debate at the council level as to the merits of these three tests, and what the levels will be, and whether or not the age ought to be expanded. So all of that kind of detail would come out during a discussion at which the council would be asked to take formal action. So I appreciate the background and the information you provided for us tonight. It provides a good seed for further discussions.
Councilor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would ask Director Roy to add a million dollars to our budget, so we can figure out what's going on as we look at it, because if we're going to add it, I don't want this to be one of those items we push down the road and all of a sudden decide in late April we want to do it. I mean, can we add a line item somehow? And we can take it out if we want to, correct? It's not like it's going to be in there, but some way to indicate in our current numbers so people here can see what it's actually going to do. Because if you add that million dollars and just rough numbers to that, we're going to see what our new percentage is going to be, 33, 34, 35. We know we have a lot to cut, but, you know, right now, it's just a number sitting up here in the air, and I'm afraid that we're going to be going down the road and all of a sudden it's going to rear its head again, and I think it's important to do, and I think it's something we should consider, but I don't want to add it on two-thirds of the way down. I want to see upfront how this impacts us, so as we're looking at other programs to cut to make this work, I'll see it in the very first cycle, not halfway through the process. Is that possible?
Is that the consensus of the council? Just so I'm aware, I don't want to add and then have everybody...
No, and I, sorry, please continue, Director Roy.
No, that's just my question is, is that the consensus, so I can add it to the budget before I finalize the budget to the city administrator?
I will get a consensus in just a little bit, but first, anything else, Councilor Glant?
Not so, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Sol, you had something, I believe?
Yeah, I think my question was answered by Councilor Harriman's question. I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that completely. So the $955,000, the way it's worded, that it's required to run the program, but when I think about a tax break, it's funds that are not coming in, so I'm going to assume that this is money that we were expecting, and if we go with this program, we will no longer be getting those funds. Is that...
So you would have to self-fund the program?
Okay.
Okay? And the estimated cost to enact that type of program is $956,000, but again, we don't know how many people actually will qualify. Now, the other thing that is another option that we did in the town of Cumberland, is we just set aside a pool of money, and it was then divvied up based on the number of applicants that were received. So, you know, this is just a general outline based on, you know, some thoughts and ideas, but ultimately, you have the final decision of what you want to do.
But ultimately, if we go ahead with this program, it's going to cost the taxpayers...
That is correct.
...to help the seniors.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, councilors, and for the public to be aware, we would have to find a million dollars in our budget right now. I can assure you, we do not have a spare million. Director Healy, are there, you know, the state started a rebate program, and then they stopped it, you know, for a number of reasons. Are there municipalities that have started a senior rebate program, then had to discontinue it, or pare it back, or what are, what can you tell us about that?
I can give you the history that I had with the town of Cumberland, and it was based on, you know, they put X amount of dollars in one year, that didn't get used up, so they carried over, and then they had a little bit more money next year. So I am unaware of any programs that weren't successful, but they did shift the amount of money that was available for that pool, if you will, for refunds.
Okay, thank you. Administrator O'Malley, and is our Madam Clerk still here? So, you know, if we're, you know, if a majority of the council wants to, I guess, include this for, in the budget just for planning purposes, should we do that before an agenda item to create it? What are your thoughts on that?
We can put it into the budget, and then we have budget workshops. I mean, we present the budget to you on March 11th, so Tracy wants to get that to the printer by, I think, March 6th. So if you guys want us to add that in, we'll add that in, just prepare for some sticker shock when you see the final numbers.
Yes, I'm deeply concerned about that.
As am I.
Duly noted. Now, so if we just add it to the budget and then vote on the budget, is that going to suffice it, or will we need to, you know, have a separate agenda item to create this program?
No, we can put it on there, and then you folks have that decision. Your final vote on the budget, I believe, is May 6th. May 6th, so that would be when you'd vote on it, but we can have some, you know, like we did last year, years prior, the thumbs up, thumbs down, as we progress through the budget. We have different, you know, departments that we're going to go through, and that'll be one of our days that we discuss it.
Thank you. Any further thoughts, Director Roy? More question, yes, Councilor Chittum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I appreciate Councilor Glant's suggestion that we go into this with our eyes open, if we're going to put a million dollars in the budget to cover this program, we also need to make certain that we have $200,000 in here to maintain the purple bus schedule, and that we have $400,000 in the budget for Lewiston's share of a $1.2 million ask for a shelter. So I think we ought to go into this with our eyes open, but I see your grimace, Administrator O'Malley, and we're looking at a budget now that's growing by leaps and bounds, simply because we don't want to forget about these pressing and urgent needs that are besetting us from all sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I recommend that we do not add this to the budget at this time, given that 955 appears to be a, you know, by Director Healy's assessment here, no pun intended, you know, could be on the low end of things. And then this also, you know, we have not, you know, had sufficient public comment on this, on this idea. I mean, if councilors want to add it as an agenda item later, I think I'd be for that, but I guess I'm not in favor of just, you know, kind of randomly adding it to the budget at this time. But what are thoughts from all of you?
I'd like to see it on an agenda.
Councilor Sol, did you have something?
I'd like to see it on the agenda and go through it that way.
Councilor, Councilor Glant, yes?
Yeah, and I'd like to see it, just so the citizens who are watching know that we are trying. If we lose it and it doesn't happen because of things that we have to, more necessities, if we don't put it on there and never bring it up, it's like we didn't try. That's how I look at it.
Oh, yes, Councilor Roy?
I'm in favor of putting it on there, too. I just want everybody to, I think we owe it to everybody, that we're going to try, so that's why I want it on there, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt that all of us here, you know, value our senior residents here in town. It's, you know, as already mentioned, without belaboring the point, it will be an incredibly tough budget year. So do we have consensus to add this to a future agenda? I believe that's how we'll be proceeding.
So just a little clarification, so when you say you want this on agenda, you want to have an agenda so you can discuss the actual program, not the actual funding. So in terms of, do you want to have the 10 years, the age and the income requirements? Do you want to have that discussion, or do you want to have an agenda item in terms of, we're going to put a million dollars into the budget?
My thinking is that we would have a discussion item on the program, but along with that, also discuss the cost. Councilor, Councilor Sol?
Yeah, I think we should have, so the public can come, and they can weigh in, and they can give their opinions, and we can all just talk about what we want it to look like, and possibly where the money could come from. Yeah, I think that's...
Okay.
I'm sorry, does that answer your question, Administrator O'Malley?
Yes, I have direction.
Okay, thank you. Any further thoughts, Director Healy?
No, just, I will look into Councilor Chittum's request and see if I can get an answer from the state on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have Director Roy to talk about our capital improvement program. Please kick us off when you're ready. And joined by our Public Works Director, Kevin Gagne.
Just trying to find where the slide shows. So if you remember, Councilman A. Jean requested that we discuss some of the projects ahead of time before the budget. So what I did is I went through and I picked seven Public Works projects that, we have additional information on a slide for you, along with all of the deputy directors here for any questions that you might have. So tonight's meeting for the approval is for the five-year capital plan. Tonight, you will not be approving what projects are going to be bonded. It's just the five-year capital plan, and the 80% rule does not apply to the five-year capital plan. The city charter requires the five-year capital plan be adopted by March 1st. So I highlighted in yellow which projects we're going to go over tonight, so I'm just going to skip right to them. So Lincoln Street Parking Garage Deck Repairs on page 44 of your book. Lincoln Street Parking Garage, they are requesting $682,000. This is for the top level of the concrete deck, needs to have a series of cracks repaired. The work requires grinding and sealing of all cracks and complete replacement of traffic coating on the top deck and the ramps. The upper part of this garage has been closed due to the deck repairs needed. This was a recommendation in fiscal year '25s, but it got cut. Any additional information that you would like to add?
So this is preventative maintenance. I've been on that deck. If you haven't seen it, we aren't doing the winter de-icing, and that would add to further deterioration of the concrete. Our issue is not having it be structural. At this point, it's more cosmetic, but we don't want it to have chlorides get down in there and then start corroding the rebar. That becomes a structural rehab issue, much more expensive, so that's why this has been on there, and we're requesting it.
Additional questions?
Maybe we're, I'm just thinking about the best way to go through this. Yeah, I guess if we're, we'll take questions, they just say come on individual items. Councilor Chittum, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a way to break some of these costs out and put them in the operating budget? In an ideal world, all $680,000 would be operational instead of capital, because it is preventative maintenance. But is there a way to break some of it out and put it in the operating budget? Director Roy?
There are certain items, everything has to be done at once, so it's considered a capital item, because that whole cost is what's considered to be done to improve that asset, so it would be a capital asset.
Councilor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. So Director Roy, if I understand correctly, one-time items, basically, we're going to seal it one time and may not do it again for 10 years, and that's why it's not going to go any other direction. You know, he's calling it preventive maintenance when it's really repair, and I guess that's where my question would be, the difference would the council was talking about, which I think, you know, should we have a line item for that and put $50,000 a year, and it gets, 10 years from now, we pay for? You know, if it's going to be a preventive item, it should be in the other budget, but if it's gone so long neglected, now it needs repair, which is different than preventive maintenance, than I understand it here. So I guess clarity on that as we go through this over the next few weeks, and we go through on items we talked to, that's something that I'm going to bring up. You know, it's like skipping down to the gym floor. That's something that gets done, like a high school. They budget to get it, do it every three to five years, and they put money aside every year, so when it shows up, it gets taken care of. So that's a preventive or a maintenance-type thing that's not, if somebody went in there and ruined the floor and you had to fix it, then that would be different. So I just, you know, as we go through these, I don't want to go over it too much tonight, but that's kind of where my thoughts come from when I went through the book and I went through everything, as Councilor Chittum did, you know, I want to know what kind of, we need a preventive program, let's introduce that, so that three or four years from now, we're not looking for a half million dollars, maybe we're looking for $150,000, because we've got money in a preventive program somehow. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on Lincoln Street?
No.
So next is the Public Works Vehicle Equipment Wash Facilities, which can be found on page 45, for $1,2,507,400. Utility was approved last year in the fiscal year '25, so this portion is all the general fund portion. So it was split out last year, if you look in the book, down in the description, 70% Public Works, 12% water, 12% sewer, 6% storm water. So this portion that we're requesting is only the 70% for the Public Works piece, the general fund piece. Municipal Garage is looking for the cost of repairs for items that could be identified as fallen due to corrosion. There was a memo that went out to Public Works Director on that from Phil, so I don't know if you want Phil to come up and speak on this behalf, or...
So we have our deputies that can come to the side podium to answer details that I can't, or I'll defer to them, in talking with Phil and Megan over the last couple of weeks. That 33 units represents some of the biggest expenses that we've seen, so there's other, this is an avoided cost. It's, you know, it's been hard to come up with a dead-set number. Generally, looking at the number of fleet in Public Works, and then including some of the other departments that use it, so PD, fire, we have outside agencies also that could use this wash facility. Right now, just with Public Works units, I think we're looking at an eight-year break-even, and that's unavoidable cost. So as you add in other fleets and those type of added costs, that payback, that break-even point gets shorter. I can let Phil chime in with any detailed questions you have. I think we still need to, you know, the vehicles that already have five years of, on them of, you know, wash when you can, when we can fit it in between storms and whatnot, whereas we'll see the real benefits when we get a new vehicle from day one with this wash facility. We are pre-treating all new vehicles that come in, at least in Public Works, for an undercoating that helps prevent rust from the start, and we treat those annually. Crews are doing their best to offload chlorides, but between storm events, if we can get it washed off and then use some of our other agents to really get the chlorides off, that's when we're seeing the issue. So this would dramatically help us with that.
Councilor Chittum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. Can we see the memo that you alluded to? And Director Roy, I'm, you, I think I heard you say that this would be coming out of the general fund?
Bonded out of the...
Could you send it to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Bonded out of the public, well, it's general fund debt. Like you said, the portion for water, sewer, and storm water...
As opposed to enterprise?
...has already been approved to be bonded...
Yeah.
...last year. This is the piece for the Public Works piece.
I see, okay. So it is bonded, but it is coming out of the general taxpayer's pocket as opposed to the users and the rate payers. They have already paid their share effectively through the enterprise funds.
Correct.
All right. Yeah, I would be very interested to see this memo. As you know, Director Gagne, I have been pushing for numbers, numbers, numbers. Show me the money, and if we can make this pay for itself, then obviously, I'm in favor of it anyway, but I really want to see the background, so thank you.
Absolutely. We'll send that out to the full council and the mayor.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Armory Refinished Gym Floor?
So the Armory Refinished Gym Floor is on page 48 of your book. This is to restore maintenance that needs to be done due to the increase of the life of the floor. Maintenance is to be completed every eight to 12 years. This is in addition to daily maintenance and annual maintenance that is done on the floor. I believe Director Nicole is here with, to go over pieces of the issues that have arisen for safety of the floor and the individuals using the gym.
Thank you so much. Happy to be here. And Louis Trincott's also here, who can speak more specifically on the maintenance piece of it. For those of you who have been to the Armory recently, you can, if you go up to the balcony and you look down, there are large white blotches all over the floor, and I actually brought a piece of the floor with me. They come in all shapes and sizes. First look, it's a safety hazard. People are playing volleyball, they come down in a half-broken piece, they slip and fall. The other major issue is, to the bottom of the slide, you'll see that there's a cost breakdown for the initial restorative maintenance. We're looking at $5.59 per square feet, excuse me, per square foot. If we don't replace the top coat, which has to happen every, you know, eight to 12 years, the wood floor actually becomes exposed, which means then you're getting down into water and sand, getting into the grains, more scratches directly to the wood floor itself, and it just becomes more expensive to be able to repair. This gym, as you all know, it's a, it gets a little more use than a standard, like, school PE floor. It's a true community space, which means we have boots, we have tables, we have, you know, basketball, we have everything that hits that floor, and it's kind of, the program is designed in that way to make sure that multiple people from the community can use that space, so it gets a lot of wear and tear, for sure.
Councilor Sol?
When was the last time the floor was done?
We're thinking seven or eight years ago.
So you're close.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and actually, during COVID, the, the blue mats that get put on the floor during voting and such, those mats were put down for three months while the facility was being used as a homeless shelter, and when those mats came up, it actually took extra pieces off of the floor with it, so that was kind of a starting of this, you know, earlier than, you know, ideally, we'd be doing the refresh.
Do you have anything you can protect the floor with when you bring in big events?
We have the blue mats that we'll put down.
Okay.
Yeah, but those are put down for, if we have Voting Day, a large vendor or craft Yeah. But those are put down for, if we have Voting Day, a large vendor or craft show.
You're talking about like gym mats, like tumble mats?
For...
For the floor? What's the blue mat?
So there are, it's a vinyl covering that get rolled out.
Oh, okay. I was picturing like the tumble mats.
No, those are cheering. Those are elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. When you say refinish, are we taking it to the wood and building it up, correct? So it means you'd be putting new lines and dots and all your good things back on?
Yes, yes.
At the same time?
Yes. So the daily maintenance is dry mopping and, again, just spot mopping as needed. We do do a refresh every September, which is just, it's a quick sand and then another coat after that. This will bring it all the way back down. Right now, we're planning on six pickleball courts, three volleyball courts. Our two regular-sized basketball courts get lined, and then the roller derby track and the college-sized basketball court that goes down the middle.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. Director Welsh, I would like to see in next year's budget $10,000, $12,000 set aside for a sinking fund, as Counselor Glant referred to in an earlier discussion, so that we build up this fund and we earn interest on it rather than paying interest on borrowing money to do these needed repairs. I'm particularly glad you brought up the safety issue. That's of paramount importance. I think this project needs to be done, but I would far rather see it saved for and paid for out of gradually accumulated funds in your general operating budget. Thank you.
Are we all set on the Armory floor?
Yeah, next item.
So the next item is the Central Avenue Rehab, Russell Street to Campus Ave. $1,004,000, $350,000 from the city, $350,000 from sewer, and $700,000 from Main Department of Transportation. This is a concern because of the condition of the road and safety of the kids, with this being a safe route between the middle school and the north side of Russell Street. Public Works has been working with Bates College to coordinate the project design that will work for the city and Bates College to keep the kids safe and the citizens separate. There's a separate attachment within your packet that you got that shows the current plan, the details that they're still working on, but that kind of gives you an idea of what they're looking at to do. Any questions? Or do you want to add anything, Kevin?
I'd just say that right now, this, we did a very thin shim this fall. The pavement is at the point where it is totally broken up. We heard all kinds of complaints. This, while it is adjacent, it kind of runs through what you would call the campus. For Bates College, this is a city street. It is a definite connector from the downtown out into the residential neighborhoods. People run it, bike it. It's all kinds of recreational uses, so this hits a lot of points that we're trying to do with the Complete Streets Committee, with the overall planning throughout the rest of the city. And then the biggest selling point is that right now, this is what's considered an MPI, so it's a 50-50 cost share with the state. If you have any questions about that MPI, I have City Engineer and Deputy Director Bowley here that can address that. But there are some concerns in the past about cost sharing with Bates. There are restrictions to leveraging state funds in an MPI, so we want to make sure, we don't want to lose those funds. We're looking to do this within the city right-of-way, and any improvements outside of that would be done by Bates. Is pretty much the summary.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. I don't know the details, but I would ask you to investigate how Brunswick, the town of Brunswick, and Bowdoin College coordinated on the main road, and I've lost the name, that goes through the Bowdoin campus. I think there is a cost-sharing arrangement there. I don't know if it's an MPI involving with DOT, but please look into that and see if we can learn anything from Brunswick's experience.
Thank you.
Sidewalk Maintenance?
Sidewalk Maintenance and Rehabilitation is on page 64. So we're requesting $500,000. Originally, Public Works did request $891,200. We reduced what was requested from departments as we went through what was submitted. So those proposed projects are Howe Street, which is the area of Sabata Street to Ash Street, Horton Street, the area of Sabata Street to Ash Street, College Street, the area of Sabata Street to Bates Street, Bartlett Street, the area of College Street to Sabata Street. The street that they removed due to the reduction was Whipple Street, which was Winter Street to Roar Row Crossing. Do you have any questions?
I bet you Counselor Mayjean would have some questions.
I'm sure he'll forward them to us at a future time. Counselor Chittam, did you have anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So the next is the Street Maintenance Program, which can be found on page 66. So we're proposing $1 million. Original Public Works requested $5,216,033. The street listing is on page 67 of your LCIP book. This is for multiple treatment types depending on existing conditions on the roads, light overlay, mill fill, strip and paving, reclaiming, full reconstruction, preventive maintenance, and small areas done hired by contractors. Anything you'd like to add?
I think we tried to get into it last year, is some of the tracking. So engineering does a great job at actually using pavement condition ratings and values to assess all the streets within the city. We try to maintain that and use that to come up with this list. So we try to leverage state funding. We try to leverage water and sewer and other utility projects in their trench work, and then it cuts down on the amount of pavement that the general fund is paying for. There's a couple other ideas that I've been working on, but not ready to present to you tonight, but I think the missed opportunity to keep up with some of these streets may cause future larger repairs. So a maintenance overlay, a light overlay, is typically what the state is doing. They're doing some very thin wear surfaces. As staff, we don't necessarily agree with that. It causes a raveling and gives you kind of a false sense of, hey, ride's great, and then next year, it all kind of ravels and everybody's really upset. So those, I don't think, have worked as well for us. We try to get in there and do a complete street scape all the way to a nice preventive maintenance shim. Preventative cracking is something that we will still do, but I think with the prices that we're seeing, it's, everything's going up. So it's kind of like keeping up on your roofing. Once it starts to leak, gets further in the base, we need to do more to fix the road, so.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. So you were saying that you guys track it and you keep track. Is it reviewed every year? In other words, you know, I have this vision of Webster Street where I live. You drive down it and it don't look bad. And then next year, you drive down it and it looks like crap because who knows what happens? I mean, in other words, the list, because you wanted $5 million, you only get a million. It probably fluctuate, so something that could be low this year might be high next year. Is that kind of a possibility, depending on traffic and things of that nature?
Yeah, so you can look at the five-year plan. We try to adhere to that. Some things are programmed in on when DOT projects are timing, when water line or sewer line or utility projects are timed. So with those, we can't adjust those sometimes as quickly. We like to get the underground work done beforehand. But if it comes down to a neighborhood that's just really had a lot of frost, right now, we have a lot of frost, a future agenda item tonight's to deal with that. So that heavy truck traffic, that heavy, it can change the conditions of the roads, and we try to adjust accordingly.
All right. I'm not complaining about Webster Street, it's fine.
Nope.
Just so you know, I just, I live there, so I use that as my reference.
Absolutely. We do, and in addition, we do look at the complaints that people get, that we get into Public Works and complain about those roads and try to evaluate them. Add them to the list, adjust, see if we can't do some temporary measures until the next year, but if it's that bad, then we will bump things.
Thank you.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. Excuse me. So I have a question about that five-year plan, and I apologize if I missed this. So this is on page 66 of the LCIP book. It shows $1 million for this year, but then about $5.5 million for the next several years. Is there a reason why that jumps so much for those years, or was it thought to trim those back in future years?
So if Director Roy said, you know, we looked at this fiscal year and they made the decision to trim it back to be fiscally responsible. If you were looking at the overall asset of roads and what Lewiston's responsible for, this is where a five-year plan is. So ideally, we're getting, if we do proper treatment on a road, we've got good drainage, we've got everything going on, we don't want to go back there for 25-plus years.
Yeah.
With the freeze thaw, multiple storm cycles we've been having, some of those are shorter than that. So that's the goal, and that's why you see outlying years are pretty much programmed with what we had asked for initially, 5.2 million for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And how many, how many miles of paved road do we have here in Lewiston?
I'm going to defer to Director Bowley for that.
Director Bowley, that's a real question. Please come step up to the podium.
That is not in my recall head right now.
I'm not sure the exact numbers in my head either. I believe it's 220 miles, somewhere around there.
220, roughly. All right, thank you.
If you check our numbers, we do have, it's on our webpage. It's on a storyboard that we need to update, but...
Thank you, Engineer Bowley. More questions about this? Yes, Counsel Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very concerned that we're just kicking the can down the road. I realize that we have fiscal constraints, but we have a valued asset in our pavements and our roads, and until we start using flying cars, we're going to be using them more and more and more and more heavily. You indicated earlier on the desire to repair the top deck of the Lincoln Street Garage, that if we let this go too much longer, we're going to start seeing structural damage. Exactly the same argument applies to roads, as you well know, Director. Chopping $5 million down to $1 million while looked at through the lens of what can the taxpayers afford makes a lot of sense. But when you take this $4 million savings in fiscal '26 and push it down to fiscal '27 and '28 and '29, it becomes $5 and $10 and $15 million. This is not an easy solution, but I'm very nervous about saying we had a engineered legitimate request for $5 million and it's been chopped by 80%. That doesn't do anything to favor us down the road. Can you comment on that?
Well, Counsel Chittam, I can comment on that. In discussions with the different department heads, we made cuts. So we looked at what we had, what we considered life safety. I think you're going to hear about some other things that need to be done. You know, the Public Works Wash Facility, you know, we're going to save money in the long run with that. So that was a decision from city administration to go from the 5.2 down to 1 million. And I agree with what you're saying, but then also the realities of what we're going to have our taxpayers pay. And what I'm looking at right now with Tracy, when we present to you, you're not going to be happy with what you see regardless of the million dollars or the $400,000 or whatever else we've just discussed in the last 45 minutes. Anytime we take anything from here, and I agree with things that should be in the operating budget, unfortunately, what we're dealing with is we have to pay for these things, and we're trying to figure out a way to do that. And at times, it seems like it's just a year-by-year struggle to keep our heads above water. And for a lot of folks, that's not happening, and I would be more than happy to have the 5.2 million put back in there. And that's a decision from you folks. That's why we let you know what it was, but then that was a city administration decision to cut it down to the 1 million.
And Mr. Administrator O'Malley, I very deeply appreciate, from the taxpayer's standpoint, your attention to detail and your carving this budget down to what is even now going to be an unpalatable number. So your work is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm simply making the point that the longer we delay some of these things, the more it's going to cost. These are not easy decisions to be made, and I want the public to be aware that this is a balancing act and it's becoming increasingly dangerous, if you will. So thank you for, all of you for your efforts.
All right, Jordan, Jordan Road Bridge Bypass.
So Jordan Road Bridge Bypass is on page 71 of your book. So this is their request of $370,000. This project is to repair a failing wing wall of the Jordan Road Bridge, which was first presented in fiscal year '23's LCIP. Now the bridge cannot be repaired, so they are looking at rerouting the road. There is a map drawn on the next page, on 72, of what they are planning to do. You want to add anything?
Yep. I think it's due to the cost of repair that this alternative is being recommended. You have a narrow two-lane bridge with curb cribbing. We've had loss of soils. There's a hydraulic restriction. Once we touch this bridge, we start going to DOT standards for 1.2, 1.5 bank width. We get a longer span. Bridges are expensive. So we looked at different rehab options with this. At this point, this is the lowest-cost option and the longest term. So this is our recommendation, and it's saving quite a bit of money as well as construction cost.
Counsel Glant.
Will we remove the other bridge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Sol.
I know it really depends on how much rain we get, but on average, how often does that bridge have to be closed down? So folks, they literally can't get to their homes if it's closed, is that correct?
Correct. Correct. Director Bowley may be able to correct me, but I know that in my tenure here, I think we've closed it down three times. And that's just, not in the 33 years, but that, like, the, I moved over to the PW Building like three years ago. So once a year is about what I've seen. It does depend on what's going on upstream and how this has impacted, so we have issues with not just the wing walls, but also the undermining of those wing walls and soil within. So once we touch the stream, it's a permitting issue, it's a structural issue, and we can't figure out how to fix it in place in a very frugal way.
Thank you.
Yep.
More comments, questions from counselors? And is that it, Director Roy?
So I, on the last slide in your packet that you have, I just reminded you of the 80% rule currently, and this is why we looked at all of our projects that were submitted. The request is $14.8 million, so we are over $8.3 million of the 80% rule with what is requested. So our plan is to look at all of the workshops and try to do like a 30-minute of all of the larger projects for you guys to have time to ask questions before we start the budget process. So we'll look at next week, next council meeting schedule.
Thank you. Yeah, Counsel Chittam.
Yes, thank you. Clarify for me and others, Director Roy, please. We're being asked to approve this LCIP tonight. However, that does not mean that we are improving the list of projects. Those will be dealt with as we work through on the budget.
Correct.
So we should not then be focusing on, I like this project, I don't like that project, this one's too expensive, that one's... That comes at a later date.
Correct.
And all we're doing tonight is looking at the document that is a plan for the next five years of our expenditures and saying, yes, this comports with common sense and with our goals, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Local debt limitation, 80% is 64. Last year was 69. How come we lost $500,000? What caused that to drop?
As you see, the years, the debt is reduced, and this has been discussed before, that every year as we lower our debt, it becomes more and more difficult because the 80%, of course, becomes lower and lower the amount. So as we pay off debt and lower the amount that we're bonding, this issue is going to happen every year where it's, the 80% is going to keep on going down.
Thank you. And I realize that, but I think people in the public need to know that debt is not necessarily a bad thing. is not necessarily a bad thing, because if we had no debt, we couldn't operate as a city, because under the 80% rule, no debt would have zero to find $14 million from. So we need to keep that in consideration if it comes down to having to bond something or to build debt to get up to your $5 million for your roads or things that I think we need to have in there. The reverse actually works that way, and I know we don't want to pay interest, but however, we can't continue to keep going backwards. At this pace, at some point in time, we're never going to have a balanced budget, and we'll never get anything done. I just want to make the public aware of that, because that's what's happening. We're going in reverse, and that's not a good thing for a city.
Anything else, Director Roy or Director Gagne? Thank you all very much, and that concludes our workshops. I anticipate being able to start our meeting on time, at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.[664.73]
Hello and welcome to our Tuesday evening council meeting. I appreciate you all being here. We're going to kick things off with the Pledge of Allegiance and we have our very own Director Libby to lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just for all.
Thank you very much Director Libby.
Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Great, thank you Mr. Mayor. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward Four.
And I understand we have minutes?
You do, you have the minutes of January 21st, February 4th, and February 6th.
May I have a motion please to accept the minutes?
I move we accept all three sets of minutes as presented.
Counselor Chittum, seconded by Counselor Glant. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One is absent this evening. Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
We are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the Mayor who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office.
Ronnie Pierdy, Ward Six. First of all, I just want to ask the question, Mr. Mayor, I hope you have set a date for the Safety Committee. Please, we need that done because next week there's going to be two safety things that the police and the school department is having on Tuesday and Thursday next week. My other, I'm here for public health tonight, okay? I am concerned because of what's going on in our federal government and what's going to happen in public health. The CDC, if you don't know, is going to be cut. This means that we have to be ready for epidemics, pandemics. There's a measles outbreak in Texas, there's a TB outbreak in Kansas City, and I have had TB outbreaks I've been involved with here in Lewiston. One at EL in 2007, one at Lewiston High back in, I think it was 2012 or 2013. Do we have a plan in this, I can, do we have a plan for disaster epidemic, pandemic plan for the city of Lewiston so that we all can work together and we don't have to do it as a crisis at the last minute? We need to do that, and I don't know if we still have what we did with COVID, but we were running around with COVID. We need to public all of the problems here in Lewiston of public health, and we got to do, start and doing first part of public health. If anyone knows anything, is prevention. If we don't start preventing and prevention instead of reacting to problems, even the ice storm, those of you who are around in the ice storm, we were not ready for that. We were not ready for the ice storm, and we're having more climate change disasters. Do we have a written plan? I'm not asking for money, I'm asking for a written plan that the city get together and put it together. Someday you should have a public health workshop so that people here, because homeless, suicide, everything that we talk about here, violence, is public health issues. And if we don't do prevention, we are in trouble. We are in trouble with the CDC. If we don't have the CDC, believe me, I know and being involved in epidemics and the pandemic and everything like that, what can happen. I also remember the ice storm running around in Lewiston High School trying to get for people to stay there and everything like that, and being called into work during that weekend of the ice storm and everything like that. People, we need to start prevention, let's stop reaction, and I hope everybody goes to that, those violence, one of those violence talks next week. We need to do something. Thank you.
I stand up here to read this for Robert Reed of Ward Seven. These are his words. Counselor and the Mayor, I apologize in advance for not attending this meeting. Unfortunately, due to foot surgery, I am unable to be here in person. As you know from our past discussion, tax relief and the ongoing revaluation are both passionate concerns of mine, so I appreciate being able to offer some my concerns and possible solutions already at hand but unrealized. Please understand my thoughts come from 12 years on city finance, three years on country, county budget, and a term as City Counselor. I'm a municipal financial nerd. First, you'll be reviewing, you reviewed a proposal for tax relief for Caeser, seniors. I have several concerns over the data provided. I'd like to ensure someone's asking the questions I have. Ms. Roy of Finance estimated 1,601 applicants based on the 2023 property tax stabilization numbers for Lewiston. As this was a one-year program, later unfunded by our state legislator, all of our legislators voted to defund it, the 1,601 may not reflect our eligibility population, as so many have only heard about it later after it was removed. As my opinion, the amount stated as required is significantly lower than the estimate, and we've not yet determined what it costs in staffing and other items to manage. Second, the state does have a property tax fairness program in place to provide refund of property tax for the low income. Instead of limiting this to just those over 65, why not allow any homeowner of limited income to benefit? State could easily verify if they approve someone for their program, automatically make them eligible for a similar reduction or refund from the city. Third, why was a 10-year residency needing to be approved? Was this simply a cut and paste from the defunct state program? The property tax fairness program only requires that they are the primary owner, no time limit or minimums. Please consider something that encourages ownership and not rewards those who are already here. Correcting these errors will allow the program to do what's fair for all residents in Lewiston. And then we come to the big question, how do we pay for it? The answer is already in front of you. We know our current commercial utility taxpayers pay close to the actual rate of property value that are residential. Thus, their value will not be increased much. Higher values for all of the property should be a reduced mill rate for all under the original proposal. If my home was now $139,000 and is now valued at $300,000, my taxes would go up $3,100. You could generate another $2 million or more in revenue to make the program fully funded, including staff and internal expenses, with a very small shift of mill rate. Those businesses who are highly valued now-
That's time, thank you. Further public comment. And while the next person is coming up, I urge everyone to submit their comments to publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov.
Charles Soule, 42 Bradley Street, Lewiston, Maine. I'm surprised Mr. Nadine here isn't in, and I regret him not being here last year-
Can you step a little closer to the mic?
Last year, Mr. Nadine said he would take a hard look at the school budget. I'm hoping we're not going to get another $9.2 million increase to the school budget as we did last year. Federal government is cutting back. I think Lewiston should be looking at cutting back. Another question is, is that the superintendent has purchased a building on the corner of Sabaddis and Main Street, which used to be an old tire warehouse. They re-threaded, it went into a medical facility, and the roof blew off, and it poured rain in, and he went out after pleading poverty for last year's school budget. He went out after the third vote was passed on the school budget and spent a million dollars on the purchasing the building, and now he's got to do a rehab. Another thing is that money that is voted on every year in the school budget, they've been bankrolling that and putting it aside if they're not using it. Last I knew it was $6 million, that's how he purchased that building on the corner of Main Street and Sabaddis Street. Now, it seems to me, if the voters of Lewiston are voting on the budget to be used for that certain year, that if there is any leftover from any budget, school budget for a year, that that should be turned back into the city municipality for use in other areas. Another thing I wanted to bring up too is the Community Development Block grant money. Some of these people have been on that dole for years, and I would set a term limitation of maybe four years for them to get off it, because I know there's other places like Cadence Kitchen, which is doing a fine job. I was homeless for three months because I had to leave a bedbug-infested building that I had lived in for 24 years and had to move, so, and difficulty in renting, well, it was a problem for me. I drifted from four shelters in Augusta and Lewiston, and so I wish Mr. Nadine here will take a look at the budget, because Lewiston doesn't need-
That's time, thank you.
Lewiston doesn't need a nine-
Thank you, that's time.
-the 9.2 increase in the school budget.
Mr. Thank, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
That's all I've got to say.
Further public comment. Madam Clerk, Agenda Item Number One.
Excuse me, Item Number One, and Mr. Mayor, if we could just say for the record, for clarification, that Counselor Nadine does have an excused absence this evening, and so under the parameters of the City Charter, you are able to cast a vote if interested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Number One, Public Hearing on a Renewal Application, that is a typo, Public Hearing on a Renewal Application for a Special Amusement Permit for Live Entertainment for Baxter Brew Pub 120 Mill Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Baxter Brew Pub 120 Mill Street.
May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum, seconded by Counselor Harriman. Did you say? Yeah, okay. Confirming there. Discussion, public comment. Back to the Council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
I'm number two.
Item Number Two, Receipt of Recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Planning Board on the Fiscal Year 26 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan. Requested action to receive and review the recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Planning Board regarding the Fiscal Year 26 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan.
So moved.
Yes, Counselor Glant.
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Soule. Discussion. Our Director Connor, did you, were you here on behalf of the Planning Board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am.
We're going to kick things off with you then.
The Planning Board met this past week, and they went over the LCIP in depth. As you can see in your packet, their recommendation, the two items that they really wanted to see passing were the wash rack as well as the RIMP implementation. A few of the items that they would like the Council to possibly look at if cuts were to be made were the wayfinding signs, the tennis courts, the Franklin pasture athletic complex security fence, the educational space for growing enrollments, Central Avenue rehab, and the parking garage signage. One of the recommendations that they talked at length about was possibly putting off the purchase of some of the newer vehicles until the wash rack was in place and implemented. That way, they're not taking new vehicles and running them through all of the weather that we have until the wash rack is done. So that's just one of the recommendations that they made. They wanted to thank the, you know, the departments, especially Public Works, that came out and administration and sat before them and really went through the LCIP in depth with them. They were greatly appreciative about that. They would like to see the Council get to as close to the 80% rule as possible. And then the last item there was that they requested in future budgets, future LCIP, they'd like to see what the previous year was and which years, and then provide a priority listing that highlights the items that have been overlooked year after year, like the wash rack. So they'd just like to have some sort of context moving forward. So that was their recommendation. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Chittum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Director Connor for relaying that from the Planning Board. I appreciate all of the work that they put into it and the specificity that they had looking at individual projects. As you know, tonight, we're not reviewing individual projects. We will during the budget discussions. My question is, how would the Planning Board like to receive a response from the City Council? They requested it in a memo, and I'm responding now. Should we take a vote and say thank you for your service?
I think they were more inclined to figure out what, how you guys respond to their request, and then obviously if they're not going to watch it all on YouTube during the budget process, what the, what the outcome was at the end, but they, just a little bit more of back and forth. So however that looks from the Council, I'm sure we can, we can make it work for them.
Thank you. Without being too facetious, these are public meetings, and the Planning Board members are more than welcome to attend.
Absolutely.
I was just going to add, I encourage everyone to watch our meetings. Any further questions for Director Connor? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Glant, you chair the Finance Committee, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to comment on your, on the Finance Committee's letter? Only if you want to.
I think it's pretty plainly written, pretty close to what we did last year. You know, we didn't highlight particular items, we just highlighted what we thought was important to be concerned with. That's me, sorry. Sorry, I'm silent.
I'm sorry, please continue, Counselor.
So we didn't, as the Planning Board did, we didn't pick out specific items, okay? So that was not our, two of us being here, obviously on this, it didn't make any sense to try to nitpick through the whole LCPI to bring the same thing forward. So we just give you a recommendation we thought was good to follow, pretty much follows in line to last year and keeping up with state rules and keeping up with, you know, the 80%, which we're not 100% on, but we're pretty close to, is trying to get things going forward.
Gotcha, thank you. Further, further comment? Yes, Counselor Chittum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the other Counselor serving on the Finance Committee, I did want to elaborate a little bit on recommendation number two, which the Finance Committee sent to the Council, and that is that we retain the 2012, I believe it was, ordinance requiring a supermajority to exceed 80% of retired debt. That's simplifying it. We believe that that's important because it does focus attention on the goal of reducing debt to the extent practicable, but we do indicate in here that we would encourage the Council to look at alternative methods of controlling borrowing, and different ways of doing that are included in the letter. One of them would be to say borrowing is limited to the total valuation of the city. Borrowing is somehow related to a percentage of the operating, annual operating budget. We shouldn't spend more than 6% of our revenues or budget on interest payments, for example. There are other ways of looking at these controls. It's important to retain the 80% until other ways of controlling our borrowing are implemented. So the recommendation to the Council is to investigate these other methodologies for making sure that we are not borrowing money willy-nilly. Thank you.
Further comments from the Council? Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the Council. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the members of the Planning Board and the Finance Committee. I know it's, it's a lot of work that they put in, both in their regular meetings and putting these memos together, and I just want to thank them for their service to the city.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
I'm number three.
Item Number Three, Public Hearing on the City's Fiscal Year 2026 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on the City's Fiscal Year, excuse me, 2026 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program and receive public comments. No motion or vote is required. Mr. Mayor can simply open the hearing.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'm starting to get the hang of things. Yes, the public hearing is now open. Please continue.
Matthew Agron, Ward Four. So I've read through this multiple times, highly and wonderfully, great reading. My concern is, what happens when the feds cut our funds or slow down funding, and the cost of all these projects are going to start climbing up higher and higher? How do we make sure we're prioritizing the correct items to get the biggest bang for the tax dollars that we have to spend? There are many good programs, like the vehicle washing station for all the city vehicle fleet. There are other things in here that I'd like to make sure that we're not doing no-bid contracts to people who've done work with us in the past, and instead, we're making sure we're getting the best deals possible out there. That happens in places. We may not know we're doing it, we may not even think about anything about it. And finally, the 80% rule. It is financially responsible for those of us who are paying taxes, if we can hold as close to that as possible, because unfortunately, this city cannot continue to raise our taxes if you wish to keep the people who live and own property and business in the city without making them look to go somewhere else. And then there'll be no funding at all. Have a nice day.
Further public comment during this public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. Item Number Four.
Item Number Four, Resolve, Adopting the Fiscal Year 2026 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan. Requested action that pursuant to Article Six, Section 6.06E of the City Charter, the City Council hereby approves the resolve adopting the Fiscal Year 2026 City of Lewiston Five-Year Capital Improvement Program as prepared by the Acting City Administrator.
May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Glant. Comments? Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the Council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Now, Item Number Five.
Item Number Five, Public Hearing and Adoption of Order Approving an Amendment to the Duit Affordable Housing Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program. There are two items for requested action. The first item is to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to the Duit Development Affordable Housing TIF and Development Program, and to consider if anyone claims the project will have a substantial detrimental effect to that party's property interests, and then determine if those detrimental effects are outweighed by the benefit of the Duit project.
We have Director Libby here. Before we conduct the public hearing, can you please kick things off for us?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an amendment to an existing TIF that was established in April of 2024. As I noted in the memo, this order provides for a series of corrections to the development program, the credit enhancement agreement, and the paperwork that we submit to Main Housing. In summary, these technical edits and corrections, sorry, these technical edits and corrections include removal of the commercial space in the project, correcting dates in the development program, credit enhancement agreement, and assessor certificate. It provides for a broader statement of permitted expenses on the advice of Main Housing's General Counsel. It corrects some statutory references, and adjusts the mill rate estimates and tax shift estimates and other non-substantive changes. Representative from Lewiston Housing is here in the audience if you have any questions related to the project, and I'm here to answer any questions related to the TIF you might have.
Thank you, Director Libby. At this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Longchamp.
Yes, thank you.
That's the point.
Yes, Counselor Longchamp.
Thank you. I will not be voting on this, as I am, I might be leasing a space at the Duit building, so I'd rather just remove myself from that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open.
Matthew Agron, Ward Four. I do have some questions that I'd love to hear better answers on. What becomes of the former 14,900 square feet of commercial space that was put into this plan to support the residents of this complex? Has it become more apartments? Does that change how the floor plans are going to be laid out that we saw? Are these now going, is that floor going to become bigger family units, like three bedroom, four bedroom units? All questions that would be nice, because that's not included in the updated plan. Also, does those units become more market rate apartments? Not really clear what happened to that space and what becomes of that space. It's just an open level. When it was approved, that was designed to support the residents of that building with commercial things that would support them, like a coffee shop, a barber shop, little things like that, a laundromat maybe, little things that would have been supportive to the residents. Now that's not there. Kind of concerning, but.
Charles Soule, 42 Bradley Street. It's pretty tough for me to say that, because I've just changed addresses. But anyways, I'm not in favor of TIFs. I think the city's been giving way too many TIFs out within the last couple of years, and I think we need to take a moratorium on it.
Public hearing is now closed. Can you read the motion, Madam Clerk?
If the Council determines that the benefits of Duit outweigh negatives articulated, the Council is asked to adopt the order approving the amendment to the Duit Development Affordable Housing Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program, authorizing the Acting City Administrator to execute an amended agreement for development assistance, tax increment financing, and authorize city staff to submit the amended application to Main Housing for approval.
May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Harriman. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Chittum.
Thank you. I see Executive Director Kil Murray is here. I wonder if he could address the concern that was raised by one of the constituents about the disappearance of 14,900 square feet from the project?
It's still there.
Can you please come to the microphone, please, podium?
It's, it's a clerical change in the documents. The square, the commercial space is still there, will still be leased out. We're, as Counselor Longchamp's mentioned, we're looking to hopefully lease the 10,000 square foot space to Webb's Market, which will be expanding into there and having a larger selection for everybody, and then we'll begin marketing the other three spaces that'll range from 1,000 to 1,500 square feet right about when we break ground. I don't want to start too early, and so there will still be 15,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor.
So the change has simply been that it has been removed from the TIF district, but it still exists. It is, it's not, because it's commercial space, it is not eligible for tax increment financing. Is that correct?
As far as I know, yes. That's, I'm going along with what, what Main Housing tells us and how we set these things up. We lined up the deal to have it in there, but the commercial space is still happening. We're very excited to bring it in there. It's financed and ready to go.
Thank you, Director Kil Murray, and I don't know if this question is for you or Director Libby, but I'm still a little confused about the removal of 14,900 square feet of space from the TIF, and yet it doesn't seem to affect the area that is included in the TIF. And you've addressed my question, Director Libby, by saying there are more than one floor there, but to me, that sounds like double counting. The state has limitations, and we're nowhere near those limitations, by the way. The state has limitations, and we're nowhere near those limitations, by the way. The state has limitations on how much area of the community can be under a tax increment financing plan at any one time. So I'm confused as to why you can count this fourteen thousand square feet, fifteen thousand square feet, as not being in the TIF, and yet it doesn't subtract from the area that is calculated for an area calculation. Can you elaborate on that, sir?
I'm happy to elaborate, but to back up one step and clarify the last question, the commercial space is being removed from the TIF district. It's not being removed from the project. I understand that the packet is seventy pages. It is a lot to have to go through all of that, but this correction is just taking it out of the TIF district, not the project. As far as your question, Counselor Chittam, the state statute doesn't contemplate three-dimensional buildings in TIF districts. And so the mapping part of the statute is really just an acreage question. I think we probably erred by describing this commercial space as fourteen thousand nine hundred square feet. We should have probably just called it commercial space, because the acreage is not impacted by this change. The valuation is impacted by this change, and that's the important part for Main Housing. That's the important part under the statute. It's the value of the commercial space is being removed from the district. LHA as an affordable housing developer using the Affordable Housing TIF system is not going to get a benefit for their commercial space. That's not the point of Affordable Housing TIFs. Affordable Housing TIFs are not designed to help offset costs of commercial activity that LHA may operate. So it's for that reason, the valuation is coming out of the TIF, and the benefit is coming out of the TIF. And that's different from the other TIFs we've been working on in the last few months.
Yes.
I'm glad you raised the question of valuation. I'm assuming then that the fifty percent TIF, the fourteen thousand, the commercial space in there has simply moved over into the non-fifty percent area of the valuation.
Better way to think of it, it's been deducted from the valuation. It's been deducted from the original assessed value. Any increase in value attributed to that commercial space is not going to be counted in the future assessed value. Therefore, Lewiston Housing is not going to receive a tax reduction for anything associated with that commercial space.
So are the numbers that are presented, and I'm sorry I did not check this, but the numbers that are presented in the TIF spreadsheet, do those reflect a lower
Yes.
asset value after construction than they had previously when that commercial space was included?
Yes.
So help me walk down this path, then. The commercial space will be excluded from the valuation and the TIF, and it will be taxed, effectively taxed separately?
Correct.
All right. Okay, that clears it up somewhat. Thank you, sir.
Effectively be taxed separately.
Yep.
LHA will, I think, depending on how they're set up, they'll pay one tax bill to the city for everything. The reimbursement back to them is going to be calculated based on the terms you consider and potentially adopt here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Director Libby or Director Kil Murray? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from, sorry, counsel from Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you both. Item number six.
Item number six, order authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2019 sewer bond premium and interest proceeds to the 2019 sanitary sewer main rehabilitation capital improvement account, and the transfer of funds from the 2020 sewer bond premium and interest proceeds to the 2020 sanitary sewer main rehabilitation capital improvement account. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2019 sewer bond premium and interest proceeds to the 2019 sanitary sewer main rehabilitation capital improvement account, and the transfer of funds from the 2020 sewer bond premium and interest proceeds to the 2020 sanitary sewer main rehabilitation capital improvement account.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Harriman.
Second.
Standing by Counselor Chittam. If you can, please both introduce yourselves and kick us off.
Good evening. Kevin Gagne, Director of Lewiston Public Works.
I'm Erica Kidd, Deputy Director for the Utilities under Public Works.
Good evening. I'm going to let Erica go into some of the details about the project if you have questions specific to that, but this is standard with all Main DOT projects, that they do not pay for reimbursed utility adjustments in any of their projects. So in the past, we have utilized this and done in-house staff recently with the amount of work going on, as well as coordinating with traffic. This was put in the bid, and we're here tonight to ask for additional funds to be able to do this work.
Questions, comments from the council, Counselor Chittam, yes.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we moved money from projects that were either overfunded or not done to cover increased costs, and in the information included with this packet item is the telling phrase, "The bid cost for adjusting manhole covers was higher than anticipated." We're seeing that with great frequency these days, and my question is, has your estimating process for future projects reflected the fact that things are not as cheap as they used to be?
Absolutely. Director Aboli is here to address any of those engineering questions, but we are adjusting along with DOT based on these recent bids. Yep.
It makes it extremely problematic for us and for you, I'm sure. We're asked to approve an operating budget and a budget that has anticipated funds in it for infrastructure improvements and capital expenditures and so on, for projects that won't happen until the summer of 2026. And with the escalation in prices we've seen so far, I want to make certain that we're not budgeting, we're not under-budgeting as we have for the past few years. Thank you.
Typically, we've tried to have a contingency. We're looking at twenty percent on a project. I know there's been pushback from other finance committees and whatnot that whether it's enough or too much. As we get through a design phase, we try to lower that, depending on what we're doing, to a five percent. So early on, we do have an allotment there for that. We're just seeing some really, I think it's retirement, I think it's closing of small businesses that are subcontractors to some of these projects. I think you're looking at free, you know, more money and more projects coming out since COVID. Contractors just cannot keep up, and thus, we're seeing these prices in addition to materials costs. Some of these projects, on a utility project, we actually supply the materials at our cost. So we're not having that type of markup, and when we do that, we can.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from Counselor Harriman, yes.
And just to be clear, this is, this is money that is in, we have it, it's in another account. We just need to move it to a different account to cover this.
That is correct. So that would be bond surplus funds that we are requesting, that are available, that we are requesting to be put into these accounts to use towards that project.
Okay, thanks.
Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven.
Item number seven, order authorizing execution of waiver of utility lien foreclosure on certain distressed structures located on leased land. Requested action to approve the order authorizing execution of waiver of utility lien foreclosure on certain distressed structures located on leased land.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Standing by Counselor Glant. Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Item number eight.
Item number eight, order authorizing the Public Works Department to prohibit vehicles with a gross weight greater than twenty-three thousand pounds from certain roads for the period from February nineteenth to May first, 2025. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the Public Works Department to prohibit vehicles with a gross weight greater than twenty-three thousand pounds from certain roads for the period from February nineteenth to May first, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam, standing by Counselor Harriman. Director Gagne, welcome back. Please kick us off.
Thank you. We do this annually. This is to protect our more rural roads that aren't built up to take heavy traffic, protect the investment that we talked about earlier, and not have to rebuild these roads. This is done statewide. MDOT and Federal Highway recommend we do this. And this, so we're following protocol and try to protect our more rural roads. If you have any questions about those details, I'm happy to answer them.
Counselor Chittam.
Bless you, Mr. Mayor.
And a brief moment of a hiccup there.
Very, very nicely suppressed. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that there's an inconsistency. The heading of the order refers to vehicles greater than twenty-three thousand pounds, and the first whereas refers to vehicles that are twenty-three thousand pounds or less. What happens to a vehicle that weighs exactly twenty-three hundred pounds? I'm just keeping up my reputation for picking at nits here. I do, however, more serious note, want to comment that of the sixteen roads that are listed here, fourteen of them fall within Ward six. Ward six is arguably the ward which contributes more per capita to the city coffers than other wards, and yet, we seem to be discriminated against when it comes to road closings. So I'm just making the comment for my constituents that I recognize that most of the burden of limited traffic falls on residents of my ward. Thank you.
So in response, twenty-three thousand pounds is the gross weight. My understanding is that it's for law enforcement and easy detection of that weight class vehicle. Typically, it's a class five under Federal Highway, so if we see, you know, a dual-axle delivery truck, then we have issues. The exemptions are there for normal, normal use deliveries, school buses, emergency vehicles, plow vehicles.
I understand that. I was being pedantic because you, in one case, referred to vehicles that weigh more than twenty-three thousand, and in the other, you refer to vehicles that are twenty-three thousand.
Public comment for this agenda item?
Charles Soule, forty-two Bradley. Is the Public Works being given a waiver for their vehicles? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Further public comment? Back to the council. So just for clarification, Director Gagne, that's a yes. Public Works comments are given a waiver?
Correct. We need to do maintenance, whether it's plowing, trash collection, other maintenance, and provide services to those areas.
Did you have anything else, Counselor Soule? Counselor Chittam.
I did want to elaborate on that. It's not only Public Works that receive waivers according to the order which we're about to vote on. It's emergency response vehicles, school buses, fuel delivery trucks, state or municipal highway maintenance vehicles, or authorized vehicles under the direction of the Public Works Department. So there is a broad, and I believe this is in state law, that these vehicles are exempted from the weight limit that is authorized to be placed annually by the municipality.
Federal Highway and Main Department of Transportation standards. Thank you.
And we've been doing this for a number of years, correct?
Way before me, yes.
All right, we're, all right, Madam Clerk, let's call the vote.
Counsel from Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's my vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Director Gagne, we love you. Thank you. Item number nine.
Item number nine, update from the City Council Ad Hoc Committee on Establishing a Homeless Shelter. No City Council action is requested. This is an informational update only.
We have Kevin Bollard here, and did you bring a friend?
He'll do fine.
I guess, kick it off, and then we'll, Greg, if you're watching, come on down.
All right. Is that good? Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Bollard, President of Cadence Kitchen. I am also a member of the Shelter Ad Hoc Committee. So I will give you guys a brief update, more from, a little more from Cadence Kitchen perspective in regards to the progress of the shelter and the current state. So the first page is a brief timeline that we're looking to kind of finalize all of the formalities with the city. This month, we're looking to finalize the site location. There is a current appraisal that's taking place right now from Main Housing, a private appraisal from a company out of Boston. So we're waiting to get the numbers back from them. We have had our initial conversation with Main Housing and the Director of Financing there in regards to the two and a half million dollar grant, which is primarily going to be used for building acquisition and development purposes. But the 551 Lincoln Street location is still the ideal location of choice from Cadence Kitchen's perspective at this time. March, we're going to go through the planning application, the change of use, the site plan, planning approval. April, we want to hopefully finalize the planning board process. In May, that would give us the opportunity to submit our license to the city clerk, which would allow that review process to take place in June. Ideally, we would be looking for an application in, hearing in July with a potential rain date in August, with the end goal of having the shelter open and operational by September of this year. So the second page is a revised budget that we're currently working with. This is our development budget. This is for income sources and costs associated with the development and acquisition. The building is currently valued at 1.7 million, so that's where Main State Housing is going through their appraisal process now to see where that kind of falls in line with pricing standards. Improvements to the building, we are estimating at approximately 350,000. It is a pretty open shell. Some of the main costs are going to be associated with adding the shower resources, and then the individual divider space for each individual, you know, kind of living quarters. The working capital that we've basically estimated is a three-month cost of our annual expenses operational-wise for a forty-five-bed shelter. So we just factored in a three-month out-the-gate cost, which is allowable in the Main State Housing funding, as long as the primary portions of the funding is towards building acquisition and development. We do have just a small development contingency in place, just in case, you know, certain costs go over. The income source, this is where we've seen the most changes, kind of from the beginning of the process till now. Cadence Kitchen has secured the two and a half million through Main Housing, which was an opportunity that we had to secure that funding. We were able to finalize that. That is in place. Some of the other funding sources, as you'll see, we were initially estimating potentially $2 million from the EPA Community Change Funding. That looks like that is not going to be eligible or has basically kind of fallen through at this point. We were hoping for a million dollars from the county. They had some ARFA funds available a little while back. Unfortunately, the way those funds were already kind of allocated towards certain projects, we were no longer able to tap into that funding source. So a lot of the initial funding sources that we were hoping to tap into out the gate are no longer there, which does make, you know, the support of the city, City of Auburn, the county, that much more crucial to the long-term sustainability of this project. On the third page, just real quickly, we get into the operating budget and the operating income. So as you can see, it's fairly self-explanatory. So as you can see, it's fairly self-explanatory as far as the reimbursement rates. Those are all based off of a 45-bed. You know, initially, we did talk 30-bed, we did talk 60-bed. We believe 45-bed is a good gauge to use because we won't be 60 beds out the gate. You know, we'll be 30 to 45 beds out the gate, solidify, build the base of the program, and then expand the extra beds from there. But as you can see with the general assistance, the ESAP funding, we did submit a formal funding request to the City of Auburn, to the City of Lewiston, and to the county for $400,000 annually in support of the shelter operations. So that is all factored into the operational budgets, which, as you can still see, based off of the general assistance reimbursements, which we do have the City of Auburn on board currently to take place with the general assistance reimbursement for any individuals that are identified coming from Auburn into the shelter. They will qualify for reimbursement through GA from Auburn directly. So that does allow ESAP funding, general assistance, Lewiston housing waiver. But as you can see, there's still a significant income gap that needs to be bridged. Obviously, we are taking responsibility. We understand that it's going to be grant writing and a financial burden of responsibility from Cadence Kitchen. So we are bringing on the resources to be able to, you know, take those steps accordingly. The fourth page is just really a current, it's real informal. This is not an architect, this is kind of me on the computer. But I did use city blueprints in regards to the actual measurements of the walls and each room size. So this kind of just gives you a generic outlook of what a 44-bed shelter facility. This is designated with, I believe, 51 and a half square feet per living quarter. I believe the numbers from a state, federal range, anywhere from 40 to 60. We don't have final verification on that, so I basically just used the middle number with the 50 square feet. But that shows just based off of the layout of the building, without doing any major structural changes. You can very easily kind of get that base 45. It shows 44 currently on there. But as you can see, there's plenty of room just to throw an extra spot on there if needed. But it also gives additional room for that 50-bed. As you could see, 60 starts to get tight. But it is doable based off of the additional space that's kind of shown on the left-hand side of the blueprint. That's kind of all open space right now. It's just divided by a wall. So just from a layout standpoint, we went with what would be the most effective with the least structural changes. The next page is basically just a copy of our letter for shelter funding. This was sent out to City of Auburn, City of Lewiston, and Anders Coggin County. We have received confirmation from the City of Auburn that has been received and forwarded on to all of their council members. And they will be, I think they're presenting or have presented their shelter committee in Auburn. We'll be bringing this up as well on their level. The next last page is basically more legislative support. There are two current bills that drastically impact the long-term funding support for the type of shelter that Lewiston has agreed to partner with Cadence Kitchen to roll out. So we're just hoping that as council members, you guys might have the opportunity to take a look at these bills, provide any potential support, or help encourage any potential support on a legislative level, which just helps secure additional funding for shelter operations. And I believe that is all I have.
Questions for Mr. Bolard? Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, sir, for all that you have done and are continuing to do on behalf of the less fortunate in our community. It's very much appreciated by many, many people. So my sincere thanks to you for standing up and doing this. In the letter that Mr. Sattlemeyer wrote to our council, which I have received, and I believe we've all received it, if you're looking for confirmation, he refers to the first low-barrier shelter in Anders Coggin County to serve the general adult population on a 24/7 basis. I'd like to explore that for a moment, and maybe the time to do that would be later on as we come to more of the particulars. The planning board took a great deal of effort to identify different types of shelter within the city and created zones wherein those different types of shelters and sizes of shelters would be permitted. One of the distinctions was that a shelter remain open for 24 hours or accessible or have 24-hour programming versus most, if not all, of the shelters that we have in the city today that require the residents to leave at a certain time. Is it the plan of this shelter to be available 24 hours a day?
Yes, absolutely. So our goal is to be 24/7 shelter. There are currently no 24/7 low-barrier shelters in Anders Coggin County. So this is a resource that Lewiston, Auburn area, you know, desperately needs.
So people will not be asked to leave at 8:00 in the morning?
No, there will be no requirements to leave the facility at a certain time.
I'm not sure I can convey to you how glad I am to hear that. Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
And you answered the question that the $400,000 request to the city this year is an ongoing operational cost. So we could be looking at adding this $400,000 to all subsequent budgets. Is that a correct understanding?
Ideally, yes. So ideally, in a perfect world, if the City of Lewiston, Auburn County money became available, that's 1.2 million out of the 1.8 million. There is about $400,000 in reimbursements, you know, through ESAP and, you know, different housing reimbursement funding. But that would still leave about, I believe, about a $200,000, $250,000 shortfall, even with that annual support, which we obviously have the resources on hand to acquire those finances and funding annually through grant writing and different, you know, purchasing opportunities. But yes, that is an annual request.
Okay. Well, you mentioned an ideal world. In an ideal world, we would be up here giving you $4 million. We don't live in an ideal world. I do want to make certain you're aware that the county budget year is already in existence, and I'm wondering about the timing of the request to the county. Are you anticipating receiving any funds from the county in calendar 2025?
It is not currently factored into our 2025 operating budget.
So this would be going to the county for consideration in its calendar year 2026 budget?
I believe from a county level, that is correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Further questions or comments from the council? So I just, something related but unrelated. So the drop-in, you know, current operations now, the drop-in center is operating over in Auburn. Is that Wednesday morning and Saturday morning, correct? So I was speaking with the mayor of Auburn earlier this week and the week before, actually. And apparently, some of our residents, some of our, you know, shelter guests are making their way over there. And I know we run the shuttle over there, or I'm sorry, over to Kennedy Park. You know, could we perhaps, for those that wanted to go, I imagine it's much the same distance, but it's, I did not check that on the map. Could people, guests that wanted to go to the drop-in center in the morning, instead of bringing them over to Kennedy Park and then making them walk the distance to the drop-in center, perhaps we could operate, you know, instead of taking a trip over to the drop-in center to drop them off? What are your thoughts on that, Kevin?
Yeah, and I apologize, I did receive your email about that. And so initially, I know it was very frowned upon as far as us changing any locations, you know, as far as pickups or drop-offs. I know the police department was very kind of comfortable with the locations that we kind of had designated. It's one of those, we have the shuttle services. Those are all the expenses as far as the vehicle, the transportation costs, the gas costs are all assumed by Cadence Kitchen. They're all outside of the warming center budget. I know we had inquired at one point if potentially using, like, the city gas was an opportunity, you know. And we know, we were kind of told that that wasn't an option. So it's not that we're not willing to look into it and consider, you know, what the additional costs may be. But A, we don't want to go against any of the preset ideas that kind of the city had as far as what we were going to do for drop-offs. And we just want to make sure that there's an understanding that, you know, that is a service that we are going above and beyond to provide. So if the city wants to get Auburn involved, it does potentially change the dynamics. You know, you might have 15 new people there that normally weren't coming to the shelter. You know, that might now get on the van because it's over at Mill Street. So these are just all things that we have to be conscious of before kind of just making the decision, you know. But I stand by, and we would support whatever action you guys feel is best, and we would take the steps necessary to make it happen.
Well, perhaps I wasn't clear, not necessarily picking up people there, but dropping them off in the morning rather than dropping them back off at Kennedy Park. And theoretically, that would reduce the number of trips that you'd have to make to Kennedy Park, correct?
Yes, but just so you are aware, like, what those type of things do encourage is if there's an individual who just happens to be at the Mill Street location because they realize the van goes there to drop people off, and they're trying to find a way to get into Lewiston, it's very easy to come knock on my window and be like, hey, can I jump in the van for the ride back to Lewiston? So you, not saying we wouldn't do it, more of this time, we'd be like, yes, we'd do it. But then sometimes if we posted on social media, then they're like, well, hey, you know, don't be picking up anybody in Auburn and bringing them to Lewiston. So we just want to make sure we're very clear with what the expectations are, and we're all on the same page.
Okay. I guess if, we could at least explore that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Longchamp?
I'm just wondering if you could give us a number on about how many guests you have a night, roughly?
Yeah, so I know November started off a little slow. We were at about 40-something guests per night in November. Jan, I'm sorry, December, we jumped up about 50% to 60-something guests. In January, we were averaging about 70-something guests. Our highest night recently has been 93 guests. And I can say pretty consistently for the past two or three weeks, we're probably in that 80 to 90 range nightly.
Yes, Counselor Soul?
So that's a lot of people to put in one little space. Have you had a lot of service calls to the police department?
I mean, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I feel very comfortable and confident saying I don't believe we have a lot of service calls that are generated from in-house activity. What we do have, we have a lot of EMS calls, you know, just from people who are feeling this way or have chest pains or having trouble breathing, so we do get a lot of those calls. But I believe that the service call track record is pretty reputable. You know, I haven't seen the recent numbers. I did get numbers two months into it, and the calls were very minimal. So I do believe that the service calls have been on a very minimal level from the police department's standpoint. I wish I had some real numbers to give you. But just from, I see the shift notes every single night. I'm there seven days a week. So I know everything that takes place in that place. So I think that we're definitely doing an amazing job, you know, minimizing that type of engagement and activity.
Well, the couple times that I've been there, it's been, it's been real quiet. And my dog loves running and seeing all the guests. And everyone seemed to be getting along, and everything was great. But so I just wanted to, I guess, check in. There's a lot of rumors that we hear, and then, you know, and I'm sure some of them are not true, about, you know, fights or ODs and things like that. So I was just curious what's happening, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I, based off of my knowledge, since November 15th, we've had three OD calls or less from the warming center. And I believe the City of Lewiston, on average, probably averages about 10 to 15 a month, you know, on the streets alone. So we've been open for almost three months, you know, and we've had less than half of a dozen. So to me, that would, just from a data standpoint, suggest that the warming center is a safer place than the streets of Lewiston, you know, from an overdose standpoint. And that's with having 90 of those individuals, not saying they're all, you know, strong drug users, but having 90 individuals under that roof each evening. You know, substance use inside the building is one thing that I scream from the rooftops, you know. So, you know, it's a fine line between compassion and consistency, you know, because when you catch someone, you know, getting ready to use drugs in the bathroom, and it's three degrees out, you know, and then you're referred to as inhumane, you know, if you follow through with the expectations and rules and guidelines. But at the same time, the consistency is really what the most driving factor of the successes.
I appreciate that, because you have to draw a line somewhere, and you have to stick to it, or it's just going to keep going, getting higher. So I appreciate that you are holding them to their accountability. We'll go with that one. So, thank you.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. I just want to say, great job, Kevin. Your ability to generate community partners is amazing. I want to shout them all out because I follow a lot on Facebook and all that stuff, social media, and I see the meals, I see the donations, I see everything that goes into that. And your work is really amazing, and I just want to commend you for that.
Yeah, thank you. And we understand, you know, low barrier anything, you know. Obviously, we're talking about long-term, a low-barrier shelter. But what most people don't realize, and they don't realize it because of the narrative that we've helped create around the facility and the program we run, is we're running basically a no-barrier warming center. So when really there's all these concerns of low barrier, it's doable. You know, low barrier really is just how am I getting in the door? It's not really what the expectations are of me once I get in that door. And I think, you know, the way we're operating the warming center is really helping create, change the narrative around those discussions, and really help create, you know, more awareness around the realities of it.
Yeah, and I want to commend your team, too. Your team is doing an amazing job, so appreciate that. Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. Counselor Roy, you yourself, as one of the co-chairs of this committee, deserves some of the credit here. Mr. Sattlemeyer, thank you very much. I do want to come back to the purpose of this presentation, which is more about the Shelter Committee, and ask you specifically, are you comfortable with the progress that's being made with the timelines you've created for yourselves? I know that we initially set this committee up to expire, is that the right term? In October, submit a final report in October, and it was to be dissolved December 31st. You convinced the council to extend it for another year. Are you comfortable with the progress that's being made and the use that's being made of that additional time?
Yeah, we absolutely, you know, I think we're using the time well. Work is getting done, and I believe we're still...
Can you just move the mic a little closer to you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I feel good about the progress we're making. I think the committee continues to play an important supportive role in trying to get to our goal, which is the opening of the new shelter. And, yeah, at the moment, I don't have anything to propose in terms of an amendment to our timeline. I think we're still just really in the thick of the work. And obviously, you know, Kevin's group is really taking the lead more and more in that development. And we're trying to continue to identify pieces along the way where we can be supportive and try to, you know, share that work together. So at the moment, I don't have any changes, but I feel good about the progress.
Okay, thank you. And without naming any names, do you have essentially the same roster of individuals that were initially appointed by the mayor back in May of last year? And are they participating?
Yes, there's only one person who, I don't think the schedule worked for them to begin with. So there's one individual that attended the first meeting and hasn't been there since. I don't think we've had any other changes to the committee since then.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's a marvelous committee, and you've got some dedicated people on there. I know that we were eager to see the committee begin working and very happy with the slate of candidates that were appointed by the mayor. So, thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, again, apologies for being late. Kevin may have touched upon the... this, but I, I would reiterate that, um, one thing that I think would be of value, uh, I guess, I, I stated in, in one of the letters to council and will state again, we'd like to see the council, um, authorize one or more representatives from the city to advocate for these two, uh, currently LRs, hopefully they will have legislative numbers, uh, in the near future, um, that could help create more state resources to support not just the Lewiston shelter, but other shelters around the state. Uh, so I hope council would be willing to take that up at a near-future meeting.
Thank you. Um, I do have one other question, or perhaps two. Um, I, an invitation, uh, to have a representative of the Shelter Committee participate or, or become involved with the City Link, uh, Transit Committee. There has been discussion about altering transit lines to better accommodate the location of the shelter, uh, and I'd like to see a communication going forward with that. Um, and finally, I have a question about, is there a representative or is there a connection between, uh, the Lewiston Shelter Ordinance, Shelter Committee and the, and I'm going to get this wrong here, Anderson County Homelessness and Housing Hub Coordinator? That's an individual, I believe, that works from LHA. Has there been communication so that that, that group has been brought into the loop?
Yeah, I think Kevin's had more communication with that person than I have, so.
Yeah, I believe the Hub Four Coordinator is Julia Kimball. Um, I talk with Julia probably weekly, you know, either via email or, or telephone. Um, you know, I just attended the last case management, um, conference call two weeks ago, um, for Hub Four. That way, we were able to, uh, update case managers with-
Excuse me, one second. Uh, listen, if you'd like to have a committee meeting, if you can move into the executive room, that'd be great.
Um, you know, that way, we're able to, uh, connect client, uh, case managers, uh, with clients who had been attending, uh, the warming center, uh, to where there were disconnects and, and connectivity. Um, so yeah, we've been working directly. We were also, um, our team was also a, um, point of contact and of, uh, data entry for the point-in-time count this year, um, over at the warming center as well.
All right, thank you. And just clarify for me what Hub Four is?
Uh, it's basically Anderson County.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Further, uh, questions from the council? Public comment for this, uh, it's not really an agenda item, but it's on the agenda.
Child Soul, forty-two, Bradley. Like I said earlier, I was homeless for three months, uh, due to the fact of, uh, bedbug infestation in the building, I had to leave everything there, had nothing. Uh, I showed up to a number of, um, shelters, uh, Veteran Shelter at, um, Togus and, uh, Breeder Life and, uh, and, um, naturally, uh, Cadet's Kitchen. And, um, they were an aid. I mean, everything I got on is pretty much from Cadet's Kitchen, and, um, believe me, the only thing I didn't like was waiting outside at eight, at eight at night, um, having to, that's when they let you in at eight. But, um, I'm glad they were there and, um, they did, really do a, a great service. I've actually seen how people stop doing drugs, um, you know, and, um, they make that difference. Uh, people are coming hungry, they, they feed them, and they fed me. Pretty superb, too. At least I didn't have to eat my own cooking. But anyways, um, they, they did a fine job and, um, you know, I was a little rough on them when they first started out because, um, I thought they preempted somebody else, but, um, sure was glad they're there when I need it. You know, people don't know when you're going to be homeless. It could be for all, take those people in, uh, Los Angeles. Have a good day.
Back to the council. Uh, anything further from you two?
No, thank you.
Thank you for being here, we are honored by your service.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
We are now up to, I'm number ten, I believe.
I'm number ten. Update regarding options for the solid waste collection program regarding condominiums. Uh, requested action, this is an informational update only, no council vote required.
If the three of you could please, uh, introduce yourselves and then kick us off.
Kevin Gagne, Director of Public Works.
Megan Bates, Deputy for Maintenance of Operations.
John Kaczynski, Environmental Services Superintendent.
Good evening. After our last workshop, uh, there were several options that were discussed, so we wanted to come back with you with some, uh, more revised, refined language to be, to consider. Uh, we haven't proposed an option because there's still kind of two directions this could go. Um, the last that was expressed was to support condos that are multifamily, converted from apartments. Um, and looking at all of the different condos within the city, um, I think staff felt that it was important to delineate which ones are along city streets. So I think we wanted to include that in there. Checking with other departments as well as city administration, um, we want to also make sure that, you know, it's going from a commercial, uh, definition now, so the two options before you, uh, one is to add condos, uh, so you see some language added to the ordinance that say, oh, add condos into the public way, pretty much allowing anybody that's considered a condo on a public way to be a part of the program. Uh, the second option is being a little more specific, uh, adding the exception and accepting residential apartments converted to condos, uh, in the public way, uh, also with a construction date, um, May sixth, two thousand and three. So if that building was in place before May sixth, two thousand and three, and then any time in the future converted to a condo unit and it was along the public right-of-way, then it could be eligible to participate in the city trash collection program. So those are the two options before you. The, the third, uh, item for discussion is, is part of the overall collection, uh, to be a part of the program. Our fees have not been updated in some number of years, uh, so you have a calculation page on how we arrived at, uh, at the bottom is about three hundred and ten. Sorry for the interruption. Some of our side discussion prior to coming to the table, um, there was a clerical error, so I think we're looking at around three hundred and twenty-two would accurately reflect the current costs as well as credits given, uh, to be eligible for that program. So we're open to feedback, discussion, uh, come back to the table with a final and another agenda item if that's what direction you'd like to go.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are all the other numbers in that spreadsheet correct? Was it just a spreadsheet formula error that caused the difference between three ten and three twenty-two?
We can give you an updated.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me see, I did have a comment. Oh, yeah, what's magic about May sixth, twenty twenty-three?
It has been existing in the ordinance for, uh, multi-unit apartment buildings and occupied, so I think at that time, uh, administration had looked at changes to solid waste and, and to make accommodations for multi-unit apartment buildings where the owner lived in the building, and I think that's, that's legacy stuff before. I, I have no better definition unless other staff do.
Okay. All right, maybe we can change that by ordinance. Um, this is a, this is a lot of heavy lifting that you folks have done to look at this and, and weigh all the nuances. You've referenced several times that these would be condominiums that are on public streets. Do we have any idea how many condominiums are on private ways in the city?
Not on private ways, but on public, there's forty units.
Okay, so the condominiums that are on private ways, it was, how many ever there are, they would still be dealing with their solid waste in the same manner that they are now?
That's correct.
And that is by private hauler, I assume?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. So, um, yeah, I, I agree with including condos that are on public ways, um, you know, basically treating them like other, other residential units. Excuse me. And, um, you know, if, if you need to increase the cost because it hasn't been increased in several years, um, that's totally fine with me as well. Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's all the comments I have. Thank you for this work.
Good job.
Public, uh, comment for this, uh, update item? Back to the-
Do we have a general consensus for one option versus the other?
Public comment is now closed, uh, yes. And, uh, yeah, yeah, thoughts on that from the council? Counselor Harriman?
Um, I would be, I would lean towards option one, just any residential condo on a public right-of-way.
Yeah, me too.
And-
Counselor, uh, Chittam, yes?
Refresh my memory, what's option two?
It's the May sixth date.
Ah, okay. I would be inclined for option one as well.
Yeah. Eliminate dates.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, option one all around.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Counselor Chittam?
You will be coming back, someone will come back with draft language for the ordinance and we'll act on that at a-
Yes, we're, we're looking to do that on the March fourth meeting. Um, we'll have to post that in the newspaper to give the ten-day notice.
So not tonight?
Seven-day? No, not tonight.
Okay.
But we'll bring it forward to the next meeting. We'll have to do a public posting and then you folks can vote on it officially.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you all. We are now up to our second public comment period, if members of the public, uh, who have not spoken before wish to speak now.
Hey, not hold my peace. Uh, Matt Roy, word three. Uh, I guess I'll piggyback on, uh, Ronnie Parody was speaking about, and, you know, my favorite topic ever, you know, committees and boards of the city. As she was speaking of in relation to the Community Safety Committee, which per order has been expired since October first, there is no information on the website, or very little information if that, there's no extension order unlike what council did for their, for the council back in Nov-, three months ago, yes, three months ago, on November nineteenth about the, well, two agenda items ago, and then at the inaug-, at the last inauguration, the mayor announced a c- committee for planning about a turf facility. There is no establishment order on the website. There's, uh, there is nine months of nothingness from the inauguration to September and October, when there were, there's, uh, two sets of minutes on an agenda, there's been nothing since, uh, October. Uh, I, again, you know, as, uh, Mr. Agar and I have pointed out on several occasions over several council terms, about transparency, and actually, I guess to piggyback on the, uh, the last, well, the special meeting of the council on that Thursday, where we approved the contract for the new city administrator, something the, um, the administrator designated, did say about was transparency, and hopefully we can actually get back on that road again and actually be consistent on that. And actually, the, uh, the council, the extension order, or any reference to the extension on the council's, uh, right ad hoc committee on the homeless shelter, there's no reference on the city website for that either. Thank you.
Further public comment? Uh, public comment is now closed. We're now up to reports and updates from, uh, yes, Counselor Galant.
The senior committee did not meet this month, we did not have a quorum due to people being ill. We are going to meet in March, and our March meeting will be extended by a half hour to give us an opportunity to get through some things we didn't get through this month.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had been asked previously by constituents and people speaking from the public to investigate the distribution of funds, uh, to victims of the horrific murders on October twenty-fifth. I would like to state this council has no authority to investigate the collection or distribution of funds by the various agencies that were involved in this response. It does, however, have the authority and indeed the responsibility to verify that the path of money that flowed through the city. Almost immediately after the shootings, unsolicited donations began to arrive at City Hall. These donations were segregated from all city accounts and each donation was deposited in an account established exclusively for that purpose. One hundred percent of the money, of that money, was ultimately transferred to the Victims and Families Fund at the Main Community Foundation, which distributed four-point-seven million dollars to a hundred and sixty-two victims. Concurrently, a separate fund was established at Main Community Fund specifically to support agencies and nonprofits that had provided and continued to provide aid and comfort to the larger community of victims, families and/or members of our community who were also affected by the shootings. The Broad Recovery and Organizations Fund at Main Community Foundation collected and distributed one-point-nine million dollars to twenty-nine local organizations. I realize that not everyone is satisfied with the distribution of funds to these recipients, and there are differences of opinion concerning the process and the outcome. As I educated myself on this issue, I learned that each collection distribution agency acted in complete good faith, transparently, and at some cost to themselves. While dissatisfaction with the distribution decisions is inevitable, it is unfair to impugn the fairness, transparency and impartiality of the process by which those decisions were made. I fervently hope that we can accept these facts and turn our attention to more pressing issues. Thank you.
Further reports and updates from the council? Yes, Counselor Chittam, did you have something else?
Um, well, yes, I simply wanted to report that the airport, uh, board has met and is reviewing its budget. Uh, there's still a way to go, uh, to come up with a balanced budget, but those numbers will be submitted to the cities of Lewiston and Auburn in time for inclusion, uh, in the budget. Obviously, the two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars that is committed by local agreement, uh, is in there, and I believe there is a request for seventy-five thousand or seventy-eight thousand dollars for some T-hanger construction. Uh, we'll debate those when we come to budget process. I also want to report that the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee met on the same day, uh, February thirteenth, and awarded a contract for the operation of City Link to a new contractor, RTW, from, uh, Ogden, I believe, Utah. Uh, they will be coming in and operating the purple bus effective October first. Uh, this was a decision that was fraught with all kinds of interesting complexities and was not easily arrived at. Regardless of the selection, or, and in fact, that selection was made, uh, part of the decision-making process was that it would be a lower-cost option. Uh, in spite of that, uh, LATC is coming to the city with a dramatically increased request for funds to maintain public transit in Lewiston and Auburn. Thank you.
Further, uh, reports and update before we move to new business? Uh, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Um, school committee meets on Monday, this coming Monday. Uh, also, I wanted to highlight the, um, safety information sessions that I believe somebody mentioned during the first public comment period. Uh, it's a, uh, sort of a joint collaboration with the city, uh, the police department and the schools. So the first session is next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at five-thirty PM at Montello. Um, and the next one will be Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at five-thirty at Lewiston Middle School, and they're going to be, um, they're going to present the same information at both. It's just two different options based on whatever works for your schedule.
Thank you. We are now seeing no other reports and updates, we're up to new business, and I, uh, have a statement that I'd like to read about, uh, gun violence in our city. Um, I want to take a moment to address gun violence in our city. Without a doubt, these incidents are deeply troubling, and so, and it's important to note that the Lewiston Police Department thoroughly investigates every report of gun shots in our community. They work tirelessly to gather evidence and identify suspects regardless of how challenging or inconsequential the circumstances may appear to be. This is a moment that calls for unity rather than division. As mayor, I urge every resident to become an active participant in creating a safer community by reporting suspicious activity immediately. When you see something, say something. The simple act can prevent tragedy. In the coming weeks, our police department and school district will be- department and school district will be hosting community meetings to address youth violence, specifically, and I encourage all residents to attend. The path forward that we, the path forward requires that we work together, law enforcement, schools, community organizations, businesses, and residents to maintain stability and keep our city safe. I also wanted to add that over the weekend, I spoke with our new city administrator about public safety, uh, about the Public Safety Committee. He and I, uh, Brian Kane-Raff, will be meeting soon to discuss the committee and solicit his feedback. Following that, our Public Safety Committee will start meeting again very soon. Thank you. Further new business from the council? Oh, yes, Counselor Soul, yes?
I have a question for Administrator O'Malley. Um, Pine Street, I know I keep talking about Pine Street, but Pine and Bartlett, more specifically, coming from, going over Pine towards Ash. Has there always been parking from corner to corner, that whole strip there? Because I only say that because trying to cross that street, it's like a really dangerous game of Frogger. It's, you just gotta go and hope that there's nobody coming. So, I didn't know if there was anything we can do about that.
Talking for pedestrian or vehicle traffic?
Vehicle. And I'm, I don't, I'm sure it's a lot to do with the construction that's happening, but, man, every day, in my heart, I'm like, ugh, I just, I'm, I'm hoping that somebody's gonna come across, so I can just scoot by, but-
So, you're on Bartlett, trying to go across Pine?
Trying to cross over Pine. It's not as bad coming from the Ash Street side, but coming up from, like, Walnut, it's, um, pretty scary trying to cross. You can't see until you're literally in the middle of the road.
Yeah, and I, uh, if I may, Counselor, uh, I, I agree with Counselor Soul. Um, I think what's happening is, uh, large vehicles are parking right up to the, right up to the curb, or right up to the end of the street, um, or the end of the block, however, yeah. And, uh, it really impedes, uh, visibility.
I can have the police department look at that, and if there's a, a need to remove one of the parking spaces, but I think a lot of it is probably due to all that construction that's been going on now for a couple of years. Um, so I know that's been a, uh, that intersection has had accidents, and I actually try to avoid that location myself, even though I have to head home that way just because of the amount of traffic that's in that area. But I'll have the police department look into that and maybe come back with something with you about maybe removing a, a parking space.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and if I may, Administrator, I don't think there's a parking space there. Uh, I think vehicles are just parking there, and so, um-
That would be an easy fix, that we can have, uh, you know, just-
Right, yeah.
Step up the enforcement at that intersection, and I'll talk to the-
Or cone it off, or, or something.
Yep, we can do that.
Yes, uh, Counselor Longchamp?
Yeah, I would definitely say from, um, Ash Street to Bartlett Street, well, Ash Street to Pine Street, on the right side, if you're coming from Ash Street, going towards, uh, Pine, the whole right side, you're not even supposed to park there this time of year, and it's completely packed. So, now you have all these snowbanks, you have cars on both sides. I mean, most of the time, you have to, like, try to get as far right or as far left as you can so that the other folks can go by, so I think it's definitely some of enforcing some of that.
I'll definitely speak to them about that.
And I wanna add, uh, some of it may be, um, construction workers and vehicles, and I realize what needs to get, uh, uh, built, um, but maybe we could prioritize, uh, snow removal in that immediate area just to alleviate some of the congestion. Uh, yes, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I just wanted to agree with Counselor Soul. Um, yeah, if you're, if you're driving on Bartlett headed towards Ash Street, it is really hard to see. Um, you know, people didn't, people didn't, uh, used to park there that much, uh, before the construction started, but now you've got dozens of construction workers there, so it's really filled up, and it, it is very difficult to see to the left there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, uh, did you have something, Counselor?
I was going to move to adjourn.
Uh, well, that, that's my line. I have a motion to adjourn.
I think you just got it.
Second?
Uh, Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Galant. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Motion to pass by vote of seven to zero.
Uh, good night, Lewiston. Have a wonderful evening.